Good evening. The July 24th, 2018 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening, please, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board's Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Dr. Mayer, please introduce. Who will be providing inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Gibbs. The last time we were together at a School Board meeting, we said goodbye to Paula Bundrick, the legend Paula Bundrick. Tonight, we say goodbye to another member of our family, another legend, and that is Brenda Flotketter. Brenda, come on up. Brenda has been... Go ahead, thank you. Unlike Paula, when it was a surprise, we know Brenda doesn't really like surprises. So she knew, so she's got her few remarks here, but I just wanted to make sure the public knew that Brenda has been with us for 29 years. She has served the children of Marion County in so many different capacities. And I'll tell you, Brenda, you're amazing. Your attention to detail, your knowledge, there's no one else like you. So this is from all of us, and we'll put these safely back for you. And Ms. McCall also would like to say something.
Okay. And on behalf of the School Board, we want to thank you, thank you, thank you. Brenda keeps us all very straight. She does have incredible attention to detail. We could not do what we do without you. So good luck in your retirement and playing with all of those grandbabies.
Thank you very much.
And we will put these back here.
Needless to say, I'm very excited about entering the retirement chapter of my life. No more early morning alarms, long lunches with friends, traveling, and more time with my family, especially my husband and my four grandbabies. I want to thank everyone in Marion County Public School System, both past and present, who have believed in me and encouraged me to step out of my comfort zone, thus providing me with many rewarding opportunities. My coworkers have been like a second family to me. They have supported me personally as well as professionally. You can see, I don't do this well. I'm very thankful that 29 of my 49 years in the workforce have been here with the Marion County Public School System. Lastly, I have a quote from Tennessee Williams. "There's a time for departure, even when there's no certain place to go. That time is now, and I leave with grateful heart and special memories." If you please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere yet, Ms. Brenda. I'm sure that everybody... Ms. King, we'd like to start with you.
Okay. Pretty much was basically said that I was going to say, you are the most organized and detailed oriented person I know, and you have always done an excellent job of making this School Board look good. And I am very grateful for your wisdom. And I hope you, and I know you will, enjoy your traveling and your grandbabies. And I hope with retirement, you can also find time to shop, because I know you like that.
Absolutely.
Stacy?
I'm going to start crying now. Brenda and I go way back. My son and her daughter were kind of first boyfriend girlfriend in middle school. And she cheered, and he played football, and they grew up together. And then I was elected to the School Board, and of all the people I'm afraid of, I didn't do something right. Only her, because she... Miss Stacy, you know, this is what you've got to do. And I'm like, yes, ma'am, because I have probably as much respect for you as I have for anyone in this world.
Thank you.
You are... And already tonight, they're helping me with my computer. You've already... They're already starting to help me with my computer, as you always did. I love you to death. I love your family, and thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
You know, it's one of these times when I see people that really have meant a lot to me in my career. And Brenda, you know where you are in terms of that. Just for the people that don't know, when I really get into a rage about something, and you all say I'm so cool and calm, usually I've talked to Brenda. And if she can't soothe me down, I'll hang up the phone, and she'll call me back and say, did you think about this? And in most instances, I'll ask her to play her harp, Little David. And a harp was to say the things that would get me to see the things the other way, the other side. As a confidential secretary, you could tell her anything, and before she would give it to somebody else, she'll come back and say to you, do you think these people need to know about this? She always was confidential. She always made you special. And when you would say something to her, it was between you and her until she got permission to present it to other people. I want to thank you for that, because in this business, friends come and go, enemies accumulate. And in your instance, you will always be a friend. And all these 12 years that I've been on the Board, I can only say, you are a true friend and a colleague and a true professional. Thank you for letting us be serving us as a Board and the children.
Ms. Boynton?
You know, Brenda, you know I wanted to cry instantly too, because, you know, from the beginning, favorite School Board policy, if you wanted somebody, you'd have to call who? Brenda. And after she began... I know she knew me, but after I began to show her all different I am, I gave her, painted you something, and she said, yes, you can have it. And she put it up on her... Right in her office, and I was like, wow, that's the kind of person, you know, if you know, you can always... You touch me all the time. From time when... From music, from... Just for everything, I just want to say, ah, thank you. And if we call... Can we call you back if we ever need to? Because we really try.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda. You will be missed and enjoy your retirement.
Very much. Thank you very much.
Dr. Mayer?
With the exception of Item C-12.1 and just the job description for the state reporting specialists under Item C-15.1, which have been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for the July 24th, 2018 School Board meeting with the materials in the Board packet, those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye, and those opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 22nd, 2018 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If none, all those in favor, please vote aye, those opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 22nd, 2018 School Board meeting?
Then move.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? If none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye, and opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 31st, 2018 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. Ms. Suzanne McGuire, Title I Coordinator, and Mr. Juan Lopez, Director of Psychological and Social Work Services, who now oversee the homeless program, would like to recognize Community Bank and Trust.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer. Community Bank and Trust is just a wonderful group of individuals who support our community and live here, and they have had a tee time for golf tournament for 15 years that has supported the Marion County Public Schools Homeless Children Program. So I would like to recognize Mr. Hugh Daly, who's the President, and Jim McGuire, and let them just say a few words about their involvement in the tournament. Mr. Daly? This is for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Suzanne. And on behalf of Community Bank and Trust of Florida, all of our sponsors, employees, and all the participants that played golf in our annual Tee Time for Tots tournament, it's an honor and a privilege for us to present a check to the Marion County School System for Suzanne McGuire's programs in the amount of... $18,000. Thank you. For those of you that don't know, we've been doing it for about 15 years, plan to continue with our Tee Time for Tots Golf Tournament. We also were able, the last two or three years, to give donations to the Latwa County and Sumter County School Boards for their homeless programs as well, being as some of our employees and customers and even sponsors and players in the tournament live in all three counties. So again, honor and a privilege, keep up the good work. And we can't say enough for the... What the homeless program does and Suzanne McGuire's leadership. I think right now, we're stuffing backpacks for Stuff the Bus at the bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly, and thank you, Community Bank. Ms. McGuire would also like to recognize the 2017-2018 Top 10 Golden School Award winners.
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer. Every year, the Department of Education asks us to look at our school volunteer hours, and they recognize schools as Golden School winners if their volunteer hours are double their student enrollment. This year, we had 33 of our schools recognized with their reported volunteer hours. And tonight, I'm just going to recognize the top 10 schools, and we're going to start at number 10. So Denellin Elementary had 4,565 hours. Harborview had 4,682 hours. Thank you. Ward Highlands had 4,800 hours. East Marion had 4,869 hours. Saddlewood had 6,833 hours. Hammett Bowen, I know is unable to make it, but there are 7,443 hours recorded there. Madison Street had 7,602 hours. Thank you. Dr. N. H. Jones had 9,788 hours. Our second top school is Stanton Weersdale with 10,632 hours. And our top school recording volunteer hours, again, is Romeo with 15,050 hours.[991.13][991.13](applause)
Thank you all. Ms. McGuire would now like to recognize Ocala Health for their support with Marion County Public Schools.
Yes, thank you once again, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer. Ocala Health has come on board recently as just a wonderful community and business partner for Marion County Public Schools. They participated in the Superintendent's Literacy Festival. I think their business partners was Westport. And they decided that they were going to look at our teachers and how they could recognize our teachers for teacher appreciation. So what they decided to do was all become approved volunteers, and over the course of three months, go to schools, interact with our teachers, and have public lunch delivered for 2,852 of our teachers. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Christensen, who's the CEO, and he has some other team members with him, and I'll just let him share a few words.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At first, I'd like to recognize Brittany, Karen, and Lauren. They really were the ones that led this effort for us. And as you mentioned, we're really trying to figure out different ways to partner with Marion County Public Schools. How do we connect back to the communities? We have 2,300 employees that are very engaged and care very much about Marion County. When you look at our workforce, a lot of them have kids in Marion County Public Schools. And so the direct connection that we can most make back is with the schools and with the teachers. And what you're seeing is a bigger kind of, you know, investment into that. So Stuff the Bus actually started it with my kids, you know, last year. This was one way for us, you know, connecting back to the students, really seeing the great work the teachers are doing and trying to find a way to, you know, appreciate them. Just looking at it, we actually kind of had a vision to show all of our teachers in Marion County appreciation for what they do. It really wasn't an easy endeavor. It was kind of a better thought than it was, you know, trying to figure out how to organize it. But it was 2,852 teachers across 49 different schools. We got in touch with Superintendent Mayer and her office, helped us to organize, and it took us seven weeks, and it took 50 leaders from across Ocala Health to be at different schools across those seven weeks, and really connect back and give those public lunches. But more importantly for us was to say thank you for those teachers. And so, one, thank you guys for recognizing us, but really, it was, you know, our pleasure and our honor to do it, and we appreciate all the teachers and you guys do, you know, for our kids. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen.[1161.13][1161.13](applause) Dr. Mayer, you have a turnaround school update for us.
Yes, Ms. Hamby, the Director of Early Learning and Turnaround, and Ms. Beck, our Director of Elementary Ed. They're going to come up to the podium, and with them is a familiar face, Dr. Joe De Sensi, President of Educational Directions. They're going to give us the turnaround update tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Mr. Gibbs, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, and also Ms. Presspatino. Welcome. As promised at the last School Board meeting, tonight will be an update on the summer work the Educational Directions at Evergreen Elementary has been doing. And Mrs. Beck and I have both been working closely with the representatives at Educational Directions. Yesterday, Evergreen Elementary and all of the differentiated accountability schools, their administrative teams had the opportunity to participate in a very productive professional development led by Dr. Joe and Frank De Sensi. It was productive. It was a great time for the teams to be able to work together and outline their expectations and also best practices for the first three weeks of school. So tonight, like Dr. Mayer had said, I have the privilege of introducing Dr. Joe De Sensi, who's the President of Educational Directions. Also, Mr. Bob Pettit, the Site Manager, and Deborah Cruddy, who I've been working closely with, is also in the audience, joining here this evening. So like I'd mentioned, Dr. Joe De Sensi is going to be sharing the overview of the summer work and also giving you a preview of the start of the school year at Evergreen Elementary. So Dr. Joe De Sensi? Welcome.
Hey, everybody. It's great to be back in front of you again. When I submitted this particular presentation, it was a few weeks ago in terms of knowing where we were going to go. Two weeks in the summer is about a year and a half in terms of how many more updates that can happen. If we could go to the next slide, I'm going to steal this, actually, one back.
Okay, we're working on that. (laughter) To work inside of the presentation I gave you, I want to use this slide to actually give you quite a few updates that have happened since the time I put this together. The work has been great so far this summer. We've hit the ground running, and we couldn't have asked for a better collaboration, both with the principal and the school team. And Ms. Hamby and Ms. Beck have been godsend to us in terms of just kicking in all the doors that we need, and then working with Dr. Mayer to get the staffing and some of the things that came up in the state meeting turned around so quickly. I wanted to take this particular slide and say, one of the things that came out of the state meeting last week, which declined, sounds like it's a bad thing, but when they gave us the two stipulations that they wanted, we were like, phew, they do not want much at all. They said they liked the contract, they liked the way that we're structured, they like all the stuff that we said that we were going to do, but they said, last year, you had some openings, we don't want to see that, so let's do that. And everybody was on board with that particular line item. And then they wanted us to give a little more information about why we think Mr. Livingston needs to be the principal there. And I've written a piece on that. We've had the district folks go back and show some of his aptitude. They didn't really make it sound like we don't want him, they just wanted us to make the case better. So those two things were very correctable. So right after that meeting, we said, well, why don't we get together? I'll have all my folks put together some ideas on short-term retention and, like, outreach efforts to teachers or to grab teachers, and maybe you all can come up with some ideas. Well, Dr. Mayer cheated a little bit. She didn't come up with ideas. They actually installed a bunch of things. We came with ideas, and they're just like, we're already doing them, just a few things they've done in a few short weeks. They've made it to where the only requisitions that are open right now are for the DA schools. That was a recommendation that we had, they already had it in place. They talked about partnerships with teachers and helping people on the path to certification get there, and they have very intricate models for how they make that work. They did do a great thing, which is, no other teachers or no other schools in Marion can poach from our DA schools, no transfers out, so that makes a lot of sense. We had a few other... We have meetings coming up with previous Golden Apple teachers, and a few other ideas that we have in terms of recruiting that make a lot of sense, and we brought them to the table, but luckily, they're already well underway. With that being said, in the last few weeks, the number of teachers that they've placed across all the DA schools have been amazing. Now, you all contracted us to work with Evergreen, and we... That's definitely our primary focus. But we don't mind extending help to all the DA schools. And most of our last few days of meetings haven't been on just Evergreen. It's because of the state meeting coming up that we have to go back and get our plan, our SIP pushed through. Definitely, Evergreen's the focus. But we always broaden the scope of our meetings to working with all of the DA schools. Yesterday, we had one of the best PD sessions I've ever seen that big of a group happen. We let all 13 DA schools come in, and we went over opening of school, where they should be, getting priorities, getting some lexicon that they'll be working with through the year. And I'll take you very quickly through it, because I know I'm taking too long on this particular part. And I was amazed, I had about seven people in, since only Evergreen has a permanent coach, I brought in quite a few people to make sure that they could do table facilitations with the folks that won't have onsite coaches. And we had the full day of PD, which, when you have that first day of PD, that we introduce some of these topics, it is drinking through a fire hose. And then they had a DA meeting where they went over some regulatory stuff that they needed to do, and then about half of them stayed another hour, because a few of us stayed back because they wanted to keep working on the stuff that they had just learned while it was fresh. It was awesome. We were all tired at the end of the day, but a good tired. As far as Evergreen specifically goes, because I know that's why you wanted me to come in, Evergreen is... It just has a handful of openings left. We're going to open school, fully booked, so that's awesome. Yeah, four left right now, but it was five this morning, it was four in the middle of the meeting this afternoon. It wouldn't surprise me if it's three tomorrow morning, so we're feeling good about Evergreen. But because we care about all the DA schools here, all of them, between yesterday morning and our meeting today, seem to have a couple of spots get filled. So that's all really exciting. If we want to go ahead and jump to the next slide, what they're learning is our process for turnaround work. We have a student-focused model, which we talked about when we gave our presentation. In a second, we'll look at the five-legged model, which is not just talking about what the student learns, but the student experience with the work. We're going to begin the year, and you're more than welcome to the soft materials that we presented yesterday, but we're going to be focusing on discipline, we're going to be focusing on climate, having a welcoming staff, getting the students all ready to learn. We're also going to make sure the operations are all there, you know, the buses are running on time, the food service is running on time. The first three weeks are so important in terms of starting that school year off correctly. So we can't win the school year in the first three weeks, but we can lose the school year in the first three weeks. So we're focusing on the winning part of it. And then just a tiny bit about what we're doing, if you want to go ahead and jump to the next slide. A lot of education looks at education mostly just from the knowledge base, the content that the teachers are teaching. Yesterday, all of your DA schools learned that attitude, that the students thinking about the thinking, the metacognition, the students experiencing the information, not just from a learning perspective, but them having to perform is incredibly important for them getting ready for the test. And then their perception of self. If they don't perceive themselves as learners, sometimes, if they don't think they can do math, they're right, because they'll make themselves not do math. So we also have to get them over the hump of all of them thinking about themselves as people that can learn. So this is where we start out the first three weeks with. Before we get knee-deep into the instruction, which instruction will be happening here, we're trying to create a climate and a culture at this school, and all 13 of your DA schools will be approaching everything from this perspective. Go to the next slide. We split the year into smaller sprints. We have the summer window, which is when we're in now. Normally, we never get to do professional development this early, because a lot of times in the past, the state just starts to get with you, you start to the process, and we get started in September. So usually, the first time we get to touch the leadership teams, it's, hey, here's what you should have done about four weeks ago. We actually get to tell them, here's what you should do in four weeks, and that's such a blessing. We're about to go to the opening school window, which is about two weeks before school opens to the first three weeks of children being there, and that's where we can really set the culture. In the formative period, we're going to look at student as learner, where we're putting information into long-term memory, and then starting to calibrate that after winter break, after Christmas, where we're having them perform at the level to be assessed. We don't teach to the test. Testing should be a natural byproduct of good learning and performing of the self-initiated learners that we're building. We'll do some very specific things to maximize output through the testing window, and then we'll start next year at the end of this year's school year, so that we're already packing things away into where they're open up, the way they'll lose less over the summer, and they'll already be thinking about the next level that they'll be working. If you want to go ahead? So this is just a graphical organization of how we split up the school year. Go ahead. And another way where you actually get the timelines involved there. And, another way where you actually get the timelines involved there. And so, our folks have been doing the things that have been in the contract, the Site Director Days. We just finished the math audit, I'm going through final proofing of that, so you'll have a review of that coming out in the next few weeks. The ELA, they just finished the final interviews. We didn't feel like we were getting enough from just reviewing the materials, the million boxes of materials that we got sent from the publisher, so we actually came onsite and did some interviews with your ELA folks. Our ELA folks are very impressed with your ELA folks. So, we hope to have that by the end of the month. We just did the PD yesterday, and then what's left is just getting ready for the opening of school. School leadership teams are working on all the things that we gave them yesterday, and then when the teachers start to come back, our school leadership should be in a place where they can tell them, this is your part of our effort to make sure none of these schools are on the DA list. Every teacher will know how they play into this year's success. So, that part will start relatively soon. But, some of it's already started because some of your teachers that are on ten-month contracts came on their own time yesterday because they wanted to be there for the training. That was awesome. I think, is there anything, is there maybe one more slide? So, these are our priorities. Now, these priorities are specific to Evergreen, because I know you like the idea that we're working with all the DA schools, but you got us in here to make sure Evergreen this year gets a C, we're shooting for a B, C, or better. We're, like I said, this was made a few weeks ago, so filling critical vacancies has come a long way in a very short amount of time. While a lot of the DA schools were starting their school planning, Evergreen and Mr. Livingston, Debbie Karati, they were finishing their school plan because they've been working on it for two months. We're unpacking the new ELA curricula, that's the one thing that we're gonna be spending a lot of time on at the beginning, just making sure that we've got a great new program, but we have to make sure it works specifically for the DA schools and specifically Evergreen. And then, we're already preparing them for transitioning through, now that we built school culture, now let's get knee-deep into the formative period. If we do the formative period right, we can raise a student's potential by a year or two, a year and a half, between the opening of school and winter break. So, that's our, we'll get any kids that are behind up, we'll get kids that were already doing pretty well up to a four or five, and that's gonna be our sprint in the fall. And in the spring, we'll be making sure that, now that they've learned and they can work at that level, that they'll be able to do it at the level they'll be assessed. But, if you have me back between now and then, I can give you a little more information on that. But, your district folks could not be more supportive, your school folks could not be more supportive. We're loving where we are right now, and we feel like we're, a long way to go before we hit a finish line, but we feel like the start is about as strong of a start as we possibly could have. I think now we're just a question. Okay, so, that was drinking through a fire hose. What can I answer? What can I answer for you about where we are and what we're doing?
Mr. James, do you?
I did get a chance to look at the state meeting, and I want to thank Ms. King for getting that website to us. And I was looking at how we compare to other districts that were in a turnaround process. One of the things I would like to say, I would like for us to emphasize, Mr. Livingston, the academic ability, because I don't think that was bought up about him moving one school. I don't think it was emphasized enough. In terms of where we are, just looking at everything, I feel comfortable with you there. And I just want to make sure that, at some point, I'd like to be able to come over and take a look at what you're doing. Okay, and, boy, I would like for you guys to walk over there and just check the building, see if everything is what it's supposed to be. That's the thing I'm looking at.
I know they're still getting a few fine points done on the, because they had a big remodel there this summer, and I think they're almost finished with that. The other thing, as well as any of you all coming over, and that, once we get the data room up, the data remodel that we just briefly showed them yesterday, and a few other things, we've invited the DA schools, or really, any of the schools, to come over and see what we're doing over there, because we've told Dr. Mayer and Ms. Hamby, who's been my right-hand person, she, any door I need kicked in, she kicks it in twice for me, just to make sure it's open. She's going to be the person that we're going to route everything through, so as we come up with new tools for Evergreen, if the other DA schools, or really, any of the schools in your district that want to use it, use it. We're not too stingy with our stuff, so we're looking forward to Ms. Hamby kind of being a conduit to any of the other schools that want to use some of the things we get going at Evergreen.
So, what I'm hearing is Ms. Hamby will be the person that, if we want some information from, we can contact her, she can, she will be up to date on what we're talking about.
Call me directly, however you want to do it.
Okay.
Make sure everybody has my car. We have, one of the other things that we did, we had a new book come out just recently. It really walks people through the systems analysis and what you need to do to get schools started. We've shipped boxes of them here so that all the DA principals and assistant principals could have a copy. We'll make sure that everybody else gets a copy that might want one. It's one of the most, we're so proud of this particular thing, and it really helps folks, and it's a good way to, if you want to know a little more about what we do, it's a great way to get started. But, principals without, even that don't have access to us, can get their school year started off right if they want to work through the workbook part of it.
Anybody else, Ms. Stacy?
And I would like to thank you so much, and we were real excited the first day we heard you and your dad talking, it was great. You know, I think we've got some great people here, too. But, I think we've been just trying to solve our problems from the inside. And, I remember years ago, Coca-Cola had to take a look at what they were doing. They didn't bring people from the inside, they brought people from the outside. And Coca-Cola was in trouble for a little while, and the people from the outside came in. So, they had great people inside the company, Coca-Cola had built this great business, but life had kind of passed them by, things had happened, and someone from the outside coming in to help, you know, with our issues that we have. I heard you say you're not gonna be teaching to the test, I don't even know if you've decided yet, are you gonna be doing the I-Ready testing and all the stuff, like we, in our same type thing, or will you be doing your own type of testing and your own evaluation?
Well, most of the curricula that we've evaluated so far, we're definitely going to start with what the district is going with. We haven't seen the benchmarking for the ELA program yet. ELA is a specific spot where sometimes we do bring in our own benchmarking piece, it's just a home, it's nothing you have to buy, it's just something Dr. Knight would create, and then we would administer, just to get some data. As long as we have enough probable causal data to find out where the point of, where the work is breaking down for a student, so it's not just remediation of content or more reading time, it could be an attitude problem, it could be they're butterfly readers instead of critical readers, something like that. If we have, if you all have data sets that we can use to get that information, we like to use yours, because it's a sustainability thing. When we're not here, they're gonna need to use what you have. Because this is a year where we don't have a choice, and we've got to move this school this year, anytime that we see a data gap, we may bring in a little bit of our own testing, but that would be all homegrown stuff, and we would pass it by the district, and if they like it, they'd be welcome to use it at other places, too.
Okay, thank you.
But, good question.
What about the curriculum, like math curriculum in ELA? Are we using the same as Marion County, or do you bring in your own?
We're going to use the same, the implementation may be different. I'll tell you, we just finished the math review, and we're midway through the ELA review, and I have not seen either one of those yet. So, I know that we're sticking with both curricula. I don't know if we'll be doing anything different in terms of pacing or rollout. If it would be, it would be very small tweaks, because once again, it needs to be sustainable after we're gone, but we don't plan on, at the current time, bringing anything new.
So, talking about the I-Ready, when you talk about, before the winter break, probably assessing our students, so you don't know yet if it will be the I-Ready assessment or not, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And, when do you think you'll know that?
It could be as quickly as when the ELA review is done. I take Dr. Knight's lead on what he thinks about that. It also could be, we might monitor through the opening of school window how effective we think those are, because the other thing is, it's hard to put a plan together when you don't know exactly who your teachers are and exactly who your students are. So, once we actually have a real student population, real names on lists, then we'll know if we have enough data to make sure that they're pointing in the right direction, or if we need a little bit deeper intervention to make sure that we're, we don't have a lot of time, and we don't have almost any money to do this, so we can't miss a target. So, we'll work inside of what the current plan is, but we'll adjust the plan if it gets us less than what we need to make sure the students are successful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to say one more thing. I'd just like to thank our district, and thank the superintendent, and Ms. Beck, and the entire team. You know, I've seen such a positive attitude about this new thing we're doing, and I want to thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Ms. Beck, Ms. Hamby, and Dr. Mayer have been the most collaborative folks just right out of the gate. We've literally wanted for nothing, and a lot of times, they saw where we were going with something, and by the time we asked for something, we already had it, they just needed to tell us about it. So, nothing stifled us in terms of how far we've come this summer.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. We look forward to all of the results.
And we're gonna move them this year.
Thank you, thank you.
New board and the president.
I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time, however, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner, therefore verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to procedures for public comment, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone requesting?
We have one.
Okay.
Jerry Gerthe?
Good evening. Quite an impressive meeting tonight, I must say. My name's Jerry Gerthe, I live at 3560 Southeast 137th Lane in Summerfield. Last year, we launched the Marion County Fair, we had two months to prepare it, launch it, and implement it. Prior to that, we started off with a little carnival that took 200 square feet, 15 rides. With our $2,000 that we made from that carnival, we spent 1,700 and gave it to the elementary schools, to the teachers for the winners for the kids' trash the fashion show. With the parking, we donated 1,000 new pair of socks to the homeless for Suzy McGuire's program. Then with the county fair, we donated $250 to every middle school band and $500 to every high school band. That was just the start of what we did. This year, we're doing the agricultural part, so I'm here to ask the school board what I need to do to be in compliance, and what we need to do to work together, so that the schools, the 4-H, the FHA, we can work with the STEM skills, we can get the kids showing their talents through our local fair. Not only that, every nonprofit, our school club, whether it's FHA, or the boosters for the band, or whether it is future business leaders that can come outside at a booth and do their own fundraising, do their own promotions within our fair. Our organization's been all about the kids. This will be the last year that it's been operated under Kids Helping Kids. Next year will be a full-fledged Marion County Fair Association. Our kids worked hard. I would like to spend time to talk with you, maybe some of our programs that we've done. One of the things I've done over the summer, I have a grandson, I won't mention his name because he would be highly embarrassed if I did. Last year, he started off with, "School hates me." As a grandparent, a parent, and an educator myself, that was disheartening to hear. I have been following your Evergreen because I identify with my grandson, some of the problems that these kids have there. In the middle of school, it went from "School hates me" to "I hate school." To the end of the year, we're just opening a book to him, it was just a fighting battle. They wanted to retain him again for the third time in the third grade. Of course, he's going to fourth grade with skills of second-grade level. So, I started something different with Austin this year. Oops, wasn't supposed to say that. Is, we started Austin's reading journey. Today, we went to the college, and he got to go to the state representative, and he's actually gonna come before you all and present a bill that he wants you to consider for making school fun. So, what I've done with these kids, and it's not, he's not the only one, but he's the one I'm allowed to mention, is that I've given each one of them a fun learning thing to do that's practical, like if it's cooking, we're actually doing recipes. And, I took them to a restaurant, and I made them order out of the menu, and if they couldn't order it, they couldn't eat. I was told that was mean and cruel, but I said, you know, if you can't order and you don't know what you're eating, you don't need to have it, and it's peanut butter and jelly when we get home. So, I want to work with the school board, I want to work with the schools, I'm a volunteer as well, and I want to do what I can do, what we can do to work together to implement some of this. I also have a program where the high schoolers are coming after school. They come on Thursdays, and I've introduced them to the middle schoolers that are introducing the middle schools as part of their community service. They are junior big brother, big sister figures, and it's working really great because I have seen the self-esteem rise in some of the kids where the high schoolers, you know, why don't we do your hair this way today? Or, let's go out and, I do cheerleading, why don't you come to one of my games? So, this is a good program to do. I hope that we can work together, so just tell me what I need to do. Just email me. Thank you.
So, Dr. Mayer, when she emails you, we'll get her set up with the right people to have some conversations.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the revised 2018-2019 Code of Student Conduct? Moved by Ms. Boynton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James.
The annual updates were reviewed by the board at the July 19th work session. There was a discussion at the work session on two possible amendments, one regarding the term sex versus gender wording, and another adding verbiage regarding the culpability for students involved in an incident. Attorney Gibbs will provide clarification on these possible amendments during discussion.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board? At this time, I would like to recognize Attorney Gibbs to clarify the possible amendments prior to board discussion.
Good evening. Amendment one was a change to the wording on page five of both codes from gender to sex. It would read, "The Marion County Public School District does not discriminate on the basis of age, race, color, disability, pregnancy, sex, marital status, national origin, or religion, and its access and admission to educational programs, services, and protection." Amendment two would be added to the wording in the progressive discipline section of both codes, the elementary and secondary. After a thorough investigation, principals or their designees should consider the degree of culpability for each student involved in the incident when determining the consequence given for any disciplinary action involving a physical altercation. Consequences can and should be adjusted, reduced, or eliminated for individual students based on prior history of physical altercation, degree of culpability, and other mitigating factors discovered during the investigation.
The original motion approved the revised 2018-2019 Code of Student Conduct is now open for board discussion, including any of these amendments. Ms. Stacy, you were the one that spoke to both of these.
Yes. Did I speak to both? I spoke to the one. Oh, well, yes, on the sex and gender? Yes. So, Mr. Attorney, would you guide me through this? I know that, are we adopting, do I need to make, have a motion to?
The motion on the floor is as it was written and presented at the work session, so it would be gender, so if you want to change it to sex, you would need to amend that motion to adopt either the amendment, for the amendment one, which is the the amendment for the amendment one, which is the sex/gender language, and amendment two would be for the culpability issue. So, if you want both, you would have to amend the motion to cover both amendments.
Okay. Can I amend the motion to include both of the items? And do we need to have a motion to amend the motion? Do I need to ask for that?
Yeah, you would put forth the motion to amend the motion to incorporate amendment one and two.
All right. Got it. I did it.
You did it? Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Serene discussion.
I have something.
Okay.
That, we had discussion about the knit policy, and there, I am not going to vote for knits.
Right.
So, I think we should be, as we have been in the past, to be a no-knit district. I will vote no if we don't have that.
And that's fine. The staff was recommending we stay the same as the, all three major organizations, the CDC, American Pediatric Association, and I think there was one more, I can't recall off the top of my head, all say with, if the knits are outside of a quarter inch of the scalp, they aren't viable. My understanding from nursing staff is that it's an incubation issue. If it's not close enough to the scalp, they don't get enough heat to hatch, so they're not going to spread lice anywhere. But, it is certainly the board's prerogative as to whether or not they accept that definition or go outside of that. The consequence would be if students are found with knits outside of that quarter-inch window, they would be sent home and missing school rather than in-school and attending class.
So, can we isolate the two issues and have the knit issue by itself?
The knit is a quarter inch right now, because that's how it was revised and presented to the board. If you want to amend again, the motion could be amended if there's support for amending it, you know, to revert back to the old language. You could, the amendment would be to accept amendment one and two and exclude the, or change the knit issue to the way it was last year.
Okay. But can we, when I'm amending, when I am asking for to amend the policy, I'm not, can't we just isolate the gender issue and this? Or do we have to do them all three at one time?
You can do it however you want. If you want to do it separately and have the board vote on that and have a separate motion, but it would be to approve the overall code, so you'd need to get it all in in one. She could friendly amendment if there's support from the board to add the revert back to the old knit language.
Okay. But if she's not going to support this language, then isolate it.
Yeah. So, let me suggest that we take these two, can we vote on these two amendments and then bring up the knit? Because I think there may be some discussion on that one, and I hate to lump them all together if we would vote on two and somebody would not want to vote on the other. So, can we do that?
We can vote on amendment one and two if you want to do that.
So, let me be sure that everybody is comfortable with what we'll be doing, leaving, changing gender back to sex. And are you comfortable with the language on the altercation?
On reduced or eliminated?
Let's just take the two that you just mentioned.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Let's take those and vote on those, and then we'll come back to the knit.
So, is everybody comfortable with that language on both of those?
And we're going to include reduced or eliminated?
Yes. That is?
My amendment.
Yes. So, Mr. Gibbs?
When we vote on this, my amendment will be included in this amendment.
It's going to be like a three-step process, all right?
Yes.
We're going to vote on, we're going to amend, accepting amendment one and two, all right? And that'll be changed, and you vote on that. If it gets approved, it'll be changed. There'll be a motion before the board to revert, by Ms. King, to revert back to the old knit language as it was last year. And then the board will vote on that, and then it'll be approved or denied based on the board vote. At that time, there'll be a third vote to approve all the changes as amended tonight by the board for the student code of conduct, and then we'll have an overall vote to approve.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor for the gender sex issue, to change it back to sex and the altercation issue with new language. Is everybody comfortable with that? If so, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor of these two amendments, please vote by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Vote passed 5-0. And now, we need a motion to amend, if you would like to amend the knit policy. Ms. King?
Well, I think I did a good job expressing, I don't think it's unreasonable to require that students come to school without knits in their hair, because I'm not sure I really see employees getting a ruler out and measuring. I don't know if we need to make an amendment, depending on how you guys feel, you know?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Stacy.
I'd like to discuss it. I do see what Board Member King's talking about, because when we have children that just have a head full of hair, and surely on the top, it looks like it's coming down, there's a quarter inch down, but we don't know what's happened underneath. And I can't see a teacher taking a pencil and just going through a child's head, and then if she doesn't see one strand with one knit close to the scalp, then the entire class could have this problem. And so...
Mr. Illers, would you like to maybe clarify? You've done the research on this. Could you help us out a little bit?
You guys seem to have a pretty good handle on the quarter inch in the reasoning Mr. Gibbs gave. I just wanted to put in one caution. If you go back to last year's language, it is not an exclusive no-knit policy. The knit policy is one inch away from the scalp. So, we have not had a no-knit policy for a while.
So, we could just go no-knit?
You want to go no-knit?
No-knit.
No-knit.
Then nobody will have to measure anything. You got knits, you go home. You fix it.
There we go. Do we have a third? What kind of problem are we having with this?
I don't know. What kind of problem are we having?
Well, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lopez if he may come up and join regarding absenteeism and the issue that we're having. We're having a really hard time with the state's attorney's office when we refer families, when they are not getting their kids to school on time. And that's part of the rationale with this as well. So, if you could just give Mr. Lopez a quick blurb, but then I'm going to ask the board for your help in moving forward.
So, my concern is that the board tasked my department with really implementing an attendance policy. And when we contribute to the absenteeism by implementing policies that might not be necessarily solve a problem, but it creates an additional problem, then I'm concerned. Because, you know, when a kid is out of school, that is considered to be an absence. And if we go to, for example, the state attorney, and this is the reason why the kids have gone beyond now into truancy, they are reluctant to really enforce that because it's now really the responsibility of the family, is a policy that has created the problem. So, that creates kind of, you know, on the one hand, we are trying to improve attendance, and the other hand, some of our policies are contributing to the absenteeism problem. So, we have to be able to find a kind of a middle ground in which we can accomplish both. From what I understand, the research says that there's no danger, and absolutely in terms, it's more a perception problem. There's no health reasons, there's no hygiene reason, except perception and cultural reasons that we have in terms of having a rejection to that type of behavior. But it's really not going to cause any harm if they actually come to school, but it can cause a lot of good because they actually engage in learning. So, we are, our department, Social Services Department, is committed to really work with families that have a problem with providing assistance, providing, you know, some type of techniques in helping them to actually address the problem. Many times, it's not, the parents are not trying, because this is a problem that is very difficult to eradicate.
Not having an understanding of this, when these knits, like, it comes off of their strand of hair and gets onto another child, now it's at the root where the heat's at, could the knit hatch then?
Knits are basically glued to the hair follicle, and they're actually camouflaged with pigment to match the hair follicle, to make them hard to see. When you, what we typically see with knits are dead eggs or empty shells. And especially, according to the literature, I've become much more of a knit expert than I ever thought I was going to be. But, as they move away from a quarter of an inch, as Mr. Gibbs said, the viability of the egg really isn't there anymore. So, they're not a health risk at that point.
Another typical misconception is that lice jumps, and that is not accurate.
That's what?
That they don't jump from head to head. Typically, the reason why they spread is because kids might share hats or comb and things like that. So, incorporating practices that prevent that from sharing personal items between themselves, that is one way you can control the spread. And again, you know, knit and lice are two different things.
I just, I, with our attendance policy, what it is, and knowing that we've got so many truancies out there, because I've been working with some grandparents this summer, I think we have to take the recommendation of the CDC, the American Pediatrics. I mean, these guys are the experts, and I hate to keep kids out of school if they really don't need to be out. I think we have a problem with that. So, I can't vote to go to a no-knit policy when we don't need to.
Okay. Just, let me just share this with you now. When I listen at this, and I listen to what the teachers are going through being a teacher, and when I see them having to determine whether this knit is live or well or whatever, I have a tendency to err on terms of the teacher, because I know, when I was in there in the elementary schools, some of the issues, we needed to address the kid with the knit and make sure he didn't have the knit so when he came back to school, and it wouldn't spread. But now, what I'm hearing here is the teacher got to determine whether it's a half an inch or an inch or whatever. And see, to me, we putting undue hardship on the teacher to sit there and determine if the kid got knits, he got knits. And then we need to go and have him take care of that problem. Now, that will, you asked me about the attendance issue, but if the kid have knits and it's spread to the other kid, then that kid is out of school. Okay. So, when I hear, what I hear what you're saying, I am saying that if I'm a teacher and the kid got knits, I want those knits taken care of so the other kid that accidentally put his hat on or whatever, don't have that problem. So, I understand what all the EDCs and all that are saying. What I'm just saying, as a parent, if my kid is sitting there, and there's a kid that's sitting there with a knit, I don't want him looking over there to see if it's dead or alive, type thing. If he got knits.
Too close to the skull.
Yeah. If he got knits, he got knits. If he don't have knit, then they need to take him home and take care of that problem. And then the next kid won't have to worry about it, sitting next to him. Okay, we talk about attendance. Okay, that's good. Now, we got a problem with this kid, but I don't want to have a problem with that kid. That's where I am with it. And so, I'm into them to say, "Hey, no knits."
And I'm listening to two educators on each side of me. Not being an educator, but being a mom who's four-year-old had knits from Bible school. It was a nightmare. And I don't know, y'all say they're not alive and they don't hatch. We finally had to sit her outside by the pool and pick every single one out of her head, because you say that it doesn't, it doesn't spread. She, we were having time. So, I'm having to feel their pain, because as a mom, I felt the pain of that, getting it straightened out, and bleaching, and washing, and all the stuff that we did. Thank goodness, it never happened to us again. But, just to add some humor to it, you know what the parents call their little girls that act like me? A knit. A Nancy in training. So... So, just to add a little humor to the board meeting, but I'm going to have to go along with the educators on each side of me and say, "No knits, for the teacher's sake."
All right. So, Ms. King, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. I would, I would like to make a motion for...
To amend?
To amend the code of conduct.
Knit policy?
Knit policy. For Marion County to be a no-knit county.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Boynton. All right. I think we need to vote on this. All those in favor? Okay. Wait just a minute. A no-knit policy. All right. So, the motion is to have a no-knit policy. All those in favor, please vote aye. Those opposed, nay.
A no-knit policy is an aye?
On the amendment. The policy currently states the quarter inch. So, this is an amendment. So, you would vote yea if you want a no-knit policy. You want a no-knit policy? She's voting yes. Motion passed 4-1. Now, we need to go back. We have a motion currently on the floor to accept the code of conduct. You have voted on the amendments. Those amendments will be in the code of conduct. So, all those in favor of the code of conduct, please signify by...
As amended.
As amended. Please signify by voting aye. Now, it's up. And the motion passed 5-0.
Thank you, board.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C-9.1-C26.2, with the exception of item C-12.1 and the job description of the state reporting specialist under item C-15.1, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote by saying yea. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. I would like to recognize Dr. Mayer regarding Francis Marion Military Academy.
Thank you. Tonight, the board will decide the future for Francis Marion Military Academy. First, a little bit of background. In a letter dated December 5, 2016, this board told the administration of Francis Marion Military Academy it had until the end of the 2018-2019 school year to raise their grade to a C or better. About one year ago, during an August 1, 2017 work session, this board verbally and specifically granted Francis Marion Military Academy until August 1, 2018, to improve its D-letter grade, or the board would shut down the school. Last Thursday, this board again told the administrators of Francis Marion Military Academy they had one more year until July 2019 to raise the school's D-letter grade. Tonight, if the board chooses to keep Francis Marion open, that choice entails much more detail than just staying open. Because this school has received five D-letter grades in a row and is already in corrective action, per Florida statute 1002.339 and State Board of Education Rule 6A-1.099827 FAC, Francis Marion Military Academy must develop a school improvement plan that includes one of the following corrective actions for the upcoming 2018-19 year. To either contract for educational services to be provided directly to students, instructional personnel, and school administrators, or contract with an outside entity that has a demonstrated record of effectiveness to operate the school, or voluntarily close. In the last corrective action plan, the school chose to reorganize under a new director or principal who was authorized to... or principal who was authorized to hire staff. This step did not improve the school grades and according to the Florida Department of Education is no longer a repeatable option. School leaders, including the director and representative from the charter school governing board, must present their school improvement plan, including corrective action, to this school board. This will be the second consecutive correction action plan entered by the school. As you know, it must occur at a publicly noticed meeting within a strict timeframe so that if we move forward in that direction, would be scheduled for Thursday, August 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. here in this room. Francis Marion Military Academy would submit its second corrective action plan, any PowerPoint presentations, and all other materials to Mr. Ayers, the Director of Charter, School Choice, and Magnet Programs, by Thursday, August 16th, to allow you all time to review prior to the work session. And then a vote on that plan would be held on August 28th. Now, in addition to what you're presented, I need you to consider something else when making your decision. On its website, Francis Marion Military Academy claims to be accredited by the Association of Christian Schools International and features an ACSI icon as proof of accreditation. Earlier today, we learned from ACSI's regional director, David Holtel, that they do not accredit public charter schools. And therefore, the accreditation claim does not accurate and misleads people visiting the school's website and materials regarding that claim. Now, for these reasons and for ongoing concerns about academics and achievement discussed in many previous work sessions and board meetings, tonight, my recommendation to the Board is that you follow through on your word that one year ago you said that you would close the school if their grade did not raise above a D. In doing so, gives the 157 students projected to attend the school next month time to return and assimilate into any of our awesome public high schools, all of which offer successful junior ROTC military programs and a cadet-based learning environment. So to summarize, my recommendation is for the Board to vote to close Francis Marion Military Academy.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Do I have a second? We need a second to discuss.
Just to discuss, okay. I'll second for discussion.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Stacy, and I will now open it for discussion.
Okay, I shall start.
All right.
I know there's some, some changes in the statute. I haven't formulated myself with them greatly, but as long as the charter school is showing improvement, it is a little more difficult to close them now than it was a year ago, thanks to, I don't know, was it 7029 or one of the bills that just passed, that it is, it is more difficult as long as they're showing progress, and they have showed some progress. I look at the school and I look at if Forest High School, if three-quarters of the students entered the school as a one or two, I think they'd be sitting in the same vote. We have elementary schools that, you know, have that kind of problem and look at, and we're dealing with that and probably maybe not even that bad of a problem, that three-quarters are coming in as ones and twos, and that's what the school's been dealing with. So I will be not supporting the superintendent's recommendation, and I will be looking forward to another year as they did get some improvement last year, and I look for continued improvement now that they're settled in their own building, and they will be offering accelerated classes, which had they offered accelerated classes this year, they probably would have gotten a C. But because of where their location was, they were no longer near the College for Dual Enrollment, so they're, they're adjusting that part of their plan so that they can have something. Because I was in the room when Mr. McAtire was actually sharing, you know, it's gonna really hurt you that you don't have, except remember that, Mr. McAtire. It's gonna really hurt you guys because you don't have accelerated classes, and that's, that's probably what the big hit was on the school. But their new location and doing it all in one year and, and getting all that figured out was, they're eating the elephant bite at a time. So I do support giving the school another year. We heard parents here, we heard the students here, we heard everyone pleading that this school has totally turned their child's life around. That might not matter to some of the people in the school system that it affected one child or two child, children or three, but when we've got 43,000 we have to worry about. But to that child, it's very important, and to that mother, it's very important, because, I mean, even Steve Jobs, when he was in school, he wasn't the greatest student at all. And so he may have excelled in, in a charter school, because he certainly had a hard time in traditional school. So I think it's a niche that is, is in place, and obviously, every single student, and I think there's gonna be 180, 190 students enrolling this year, that's 180 moms and dads and kids who have said that our schools, I don't care if it's an A, a B, or whatever it is, is not doing the job for their child. Because in the charter school, they learn, they're, they're, it's the most respectful group of kids I've ever been in the presence of. I went over to the school and it's yes ma'am, no ma'am, they're just so respectful, and it's just like a dive back in time. And, you know, kids can make straight A's, but if they have no social skills and they aren't polite, they're not gonna be able to keep a job. They might be able to get it on paper, but they're gonna work a week and they're gonna go home, because they're gonna be, they're, you know, their, their lack of respect and the lack of the social skills and the lack of the soft skills will cause them to lose their job. So, you know, they're, they're, they're putting something in place there that maybe some of our other high schools don't have in place, and they've got to get those ones and two kids, they've got to just bring in some kids that are starting in at a higher level. But if I had a student that was really struggling and didn't like to go to school, and that contributed to their ones and twos, and they come to a school where there's camaraderie and there's friends and, and there's patriotism, and there's things that's at that school that's, that we just don't really have that type of environment, maybe at some of our other schools, in the same vein. I know we have very patriotic children at, at our high schools, and we have, but this is where like, they're like, 90% are that way. And, and I think that that's just a niche, and we've had children going off to, to the West Point, to the academies, out of that, out of that program, and, and serving the military, children that would have just dropped out of school. And they stood here and told us that, that they would be dropping out of school had they not gone there, and they're gonna go and they're gonna serve the, serve the Americans through the, through the, through the Army, and they're, they've already got it signed up to go. So there are many reasons that I want to support keeping the school open. If the parents chose it, there's a reason they chose it. There's something that's not being fulfilled at their child's school, and I do support keeping the Military Academy open. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, Ms. Boynton?
I, I agree with you, Stacy, you know, if you look at Francis Marion Military Academy, you can look and see that at this, every year, those students working hard to make sure the grades get up, the grades get up. And as I looked, I know they have another principal too. I know they're really working for our students. If, if our, for the commute, for our community, you have to understand, this is a military school, and most of those students that came, came, they were ones or twos, and now they're getting so much better. I can't, I cannot close a stu-, a school, excuse me, y'all, a school where a student is doing so much better. So I want to be with you, I'll be with you, Mrs. Stacy. Thank you.
I guess, my thought on this thing now, how many years have this school been a D? Five?
Five.
Okay, now I have been a supporter of it, and I'm still a supporter of it. But at some point, we need to take some, some of the, we need to separate what we're talking about here. And when I say separate what we're talking about here, if we look strictly at the academic phases of this, we need to look at that, because it haven't moved. It haven't moved to a C. And if you, if you, I'm just gonna use this little thing that we watched from the state, and when they were evaluating our school, they were not evaluating them on how good our ROTC program or how good we were helping out around, around Ocala. They were looking at the academic portion of this thing. I'm voting to close, it simply deserves notice to the people that's running this school. It's not the kids. It's not the kids. To me, there's a problem with what we're doing with the leadership out there, because it, because the scores are not moving. You got five years and the scores haven't moved. These kids are the finest kids. I've heard them speak, I've seen them down in Orlando, they're doing all these neat things. But we have to call what I see. Now, I'm sitting here saying, where's the academic portion here? Where is the, what are, what are we doing to move these kids? Guys, when a kid come into that school, you know what you got. Then we gotta have a plan to deal with that youngster when we have, when he come into that door. We can't sit there and say, well, he came in as a, a low-grade level, and then we're gonna get a break on it. When we look at the academic improvement of the school, that's what I'm saying, it's five years now. Now, if, my vote is to send a message to somebody that, that academic portion of this have to improve, not whether they go and do what all the neat things that they're doing, because they're doing some neat things around Ocala and the state and everything else. I have no question about that. But when I start looking at the academic thing, what are we saying here? That's right.
I want to say one more thing. Ms. King?
I also want to remind you, Mr. James, we're not exactly comparing apples to apples in the sense that there were points from their graduation rate that was not included because their class size was so small. It is my understanding that their graduation class had 10 students and nine of them graduated. That's a 90% graduation rate, but it wasn't included because of, I guess, some rules by the state. So we're not necessarily comparing apples to apples, and also, they do have the plan, and it's my understanding that you guys are, that the school is gonna have the acceleration programs, and those acceleration programs and our students receiving certificates is what helped increase our scores. It wasn't necessarily that our students were performing high academically, there was other ways that this system could have been manipulated. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, can they get it done?
Well, they can.
Well, no, I don't want, what I'm saying, guys, we can say whatever we want to say, but the numbers are there. And I, and I am saying, if, if you give them another year, then you look at the academic portion of what is actually occurring. Okay, and I know they're good kids. I don't have a problem with them being good kids. I just keep looking at these numbers.
But if it hadn't been for the accelerated piece, we wouldn't be a B district right now, and we might be a D district, so.
We're gonna, I think all the discussions been had, I think everybody knows which direction they're going, so I think we need to vote. The motion on the floor is to close Francis Marion. So all of those in favor of closing Francis Marion, please vote aye. Those opposed, like sign. You're voting to close.
We have to vote, it's a nay. If we, if we're against it, it's a nay.
Right.
I think we want to keep that.
Motion failed. Three nays to two yays. At this time, I would like to recognize the superintendent.
Thank you. In accordance with Florida statutes, the Board approved a budget presentation timeline on May 8th, 2018. For your convenience, an additional copy of the budget presentation timeline is being provided today and is in the front pocket of your budget notebook that you have. Work sessions to review, review the tentative budget being received today have been scheduled for August 9th and 16th, as well as the 23rd, if necessary. So as you look at that, I just want to recognize the awesome work of Teresa Boston Ellis and her team. With her tonight is some of her team, and if you're here, would you stand? So Ms. Boston Ellis, Sherri Simmons, Thomas Dyke, Latoya Gary, and Robin Defler. Robin's probably in the back. I stopped in last week to drop off some things here in the office, and of course, Teresa was here, and she said that you all were across the street working. I know that you put in so much extra work to get this done and finalized. You took time away from not only personal things for you and that, that, that personal time you need, but also time away from your family. I know that, that you have young children and that this has been a priority for you, and I just wanted to say, on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for your quality, impeccable work. So thank you so much.
Thank you all. Very much.
Thank you.
You don't get a raise, though.
May I have a motion to receive the tentative budget, approve it for advertising purposes only, and set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 31st, 2018, at 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom. A motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. And the motion passed five zero. The proposed budget will be posted on our website Wednesday morning. Please be sure to bring this notebook with you to each of our work sessions and budget-related public hearing. At this time, I would like to recognize Superintendent Meyer.
I request the Chair declare good cause to discuss an item regarding the funding of additional school resource officers.
I declare good cause.
I recommend a motion be made to approve funding the final accounting of the 32 additional SRO, School Resource Officers.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion on this? If no discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $67,864.65. $10,665 to Bellevue High School from Dell Webb Spruce Creek Golf and Country Club. $1,028 to Bellevue High School from the Kiwanis Club. $4,000 to Bellevue High School from Marion County Hospital District. $2,820 to Bellevue Middle School from Bellevue High School FFA Alumni. $16,000 to Curriculum and Instruction, Fitness and Nutrition in Schools, the acronym is FANS, at North Marion Middle School from Monroe Regional Medical, from Monroe Regional Health System, Inc. $4,000 to Dunellen High School from the Mortridge Family Foundation, along with Terms and Conditions. $2,000 to Forest High School from United Roofing of Central Florida, Inc. $1,500 to Greenway Elementary School from their business partner Trinity Baptist Church. $2,500 to Lake Ware High School from their business partner Lockheed Martin. $1,514.70 to Lake Ware Middle School from Lake Ware FFA Alumni Association. Three, Wonder Workshop dash and dot Robot Wonder Pack, valued at $1,193.54, to Madison Street Academy of Visual and Performing Arts from DonorsChoose.org. One-year subscription to Brain Pop and Brain Pop Junior, valued at $2,395, to Ocala Springs Elementary School from Ocala Springs Elementary PTO. $3,500 to Civil River Museum and Environmental Education Center from the Cannon Law Firm. $2,148.41 to Stanton Weersdale Elementary School from Santiago Women's Club. $7,600 to Vanguard High School from Vanguard High School Boosters, Inc. And $5,000 to Westport High School from Gary Barber. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting these donations signify by saying aye, and opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. Ms. King, would you do our thank yous to- Ms. King, would you do our thank yous tonight?
I will. On behalf of Marion County Public Schools, we would like to thank everyone who gives generously to our schools. There was a lot of Bellevue hi there tonight, and I'm kinda curious what else go in there. But we just thank you so much, and we will make sure that we are good stewards of them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, August ninth, 2018, at nine AM. The purpose of this work session is to discuss budget general fund, one of three of the strategic plan. Committee reports, concerns, and comments by our board members. And Ms. Boynton, we will start with you.
Nothing.
Nothing? Mr. James?
Dr. Mayer, is, is, is Dr. Butler right there, anywhere? Could you have her come in for a minute?
Dr. Butler, are you here? She's right there.
Oh.
Come on up.
Today, today I had the opportunity to be at Howard and looking at the summer program at Howard, and it was an amazing performance. It was amazing group of kids. This is a program I have been talking to you about, talking to the board about for a period of time in terms of what we were doing at Howard and the kids that were involved in there. And you've often heard me speak about the building just being brick and mortar. But if you were there and you would have seen these kids and seen what the staff had done with these kids at Howard, you would have been so proud of us as a board because we created this program. And I wanted to especially say thanks to Dr. Butler here because she made it happen. I went over and met with her earlier, along with the blessing of the superintendent, for us to look at what we were doing at Howard Resource. Board, you would have been very proud of what was occurring at that school today. We were looking at over fifty kids, and the parking lot was filled with parents that was there supporting that. And Dr. Butler, I just want you to just tell them what they missed.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Superintendent, it was a pleasure. It exceeded all expectations. They took an idea and just ran with it. The self-esteem part, I think, is really what touched our hearts most. They talked about the Howard Smart Academy and showcased that. But the part that was added, that extended what Mr. James and I talked about, was the superhero inside of you. And each one of the numbers encompassed all of the interdisciplinary arts, music, language arts, everything. But then they talked about the strength that they have from within. And those kids were so pumped up, and the teachers were amazing. And my staff is wonderful. I am delighted to work alongside such amazing people who put their heart and soul, and thankful to the parents for entrusting us with their kids this summer to allow us to pour into them, and really looking forward to seeing what happens in the future. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for being a part of it.
I also mentioned a grant that you received over there. Is that correct?
Yes, the museum grant.
Would you talk about that? What are you gonna do with it?
Well, we presented, Mr. Mitchell and myself presented earlier to the board about the museum, and we are ready to get started with really revamping and putting kiosks in there, allowing it to be a resource and a research place for the community to come in, to have speakers come in. We hope that you all will come and utilize it. So, a lot to come. We look forward to giving you the update.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for that. One of the things I will say, and I will always say, that we need to have a place in West Ocala for kids to go that go to South Ocala and the district outlying, and they live in that area. And I know we need to have a media center. When I say media center, I keep asking the question, how many, how many kids in that area have access to computer and technology? What we saw today, and what I am saying to you, what we saw today is that that school could be a mecca for kids to be able to go there and use technology. So, board, I want y'all to remember what I just said to you. I'm looking at if the school was open in after school, and those kids coming from South Ocala could utilize that facility with up-to-date technology. We need to do that. Dr. Butler, again, please thank your staff for a job well done. Thank you. Thanks for inviting us.
That is really exciting news, and that's just to, I love your idea of creating a space after school. So, I know you want, I would love for that to be your legacy, Mr. James. So, I think that is a tremendous idea.
If you all were there, you could have seen Batman, Superman, Wonder Woman.
Well, you know, when I got sick, I used to go every year for this one, but, you know, thank you for going and doing everything, you know? This is a good program that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
You know, I wasn't gonna say what I'm gonna say because, but since we're talking about kids and their summer programs and stuff, something came to my mind when Mr. James was speaking. And I have a friend, Dr. Nicole Thornton. And in our conversations, we're friends, and last week, in talking to her, she was sharing her daughter's goals. Her daughter, every summer, makes goals for the next year. And so, her goal for 2019, that she's ready for the school year, she goes to Jones, and so she, her first goal was to be more confident. Stand up for yourself is her second goal. Don't be afraid to put yourself out there is her third goal. It's an elementary child. Make it into Panthers, something, Odyssey at the work, which I don't understand what all this is, but anyway, she wants, that's a goal. Get a new phone case. She threw some fun things in. Then she said, trust God a hundred percent. Then she said, make five million words next year. Save a hundred and seventy dollars to get that, to get her Hoover thing, whatever it's called. And her next to the last goal is be more artistic and creative. Her final goal, don't ever be afraid, because honesty, in the end, knows it all, and honesty is good. Thank you.
Ms. King.
From one of our students.
Ms. King.
Okay. I know school's getting ready to start here in a couple weeks, and there, I had some contact with some parents, and they're concerned about the busing, because I know last year it was a big issue. You know, buses aren't arriving on time. We don't have enough bus drivers and our aides and stuff like that. So, I'm just curious how we're doing with that. Are we prepared and ready to go on the first day of school so we can cut down on some of the frustration and those concerns?
We are, and Ms. Rora, I talked to her earlier today, and she was out in the hub and taking care of those details. As always, we know the first day, please do expect some delays, but our commitment is not to have the delays that plagued us last year, and Ms. Rora is on top of that.
Okay, good. Well, then we'll be happy to report that. Also, I received last week, actually, it was last Monday, a report. I asked for a breakdown of the salary for the Evergreen Tutor Bus, and I received that information. And I also asked for a breakdown because the person who sent it included their benefits. And when I look at the salaries that were paying the bus drivers, some of them are like seventy, like seventy-one dollars, up to, I mean, sixty-two, sixty-eight. These are some great, if we paid all our bus drivers this money, we would, I don't think we would have that issue. But anyways, I did last Monday ask for a breakdown, and I haven't received any of this. Also, I would like some clarification, because I noticed that they were also the daily miles and the mileage cost was included. And, you know, I was a classroom teacher just four years ago, and I was charged with heading trips. And I see some hefty prices. I think for my class to go roughly was a hundred and plus some a day. So, when I see these prices, I would like a breakdown. So, I have respectfully, I've sent an email, I've asked for this, I haven't received it. It's been, it was, I think, last Monday when I sent it. So, if you don't mind getting me that information, so I would appreciate that.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you. Also, another huge concern, we have schools beginning on August thirteenth, and we know that we have teacher vacancies. I did, and I hope you guys, I had Paul send you guys the video from the state board last week, and there were some alarming words from our commissioner, Pam Stewart. And she made Ms. Mayer very well aware that our district had an increase in our DA schools by a hundred and sixty percent, and that we were the worst in the state of Florida. She also placed emphasis that these schools need to have teachers that are certified. And she also made a suggestion that you would reach out to her and her staff to make sure that these positions are filled. And I am just inquiring to see if these positions are filled. And also, as a board member, if we look back at the beginning of the summer, our district actually had a hiring freeze for teachers. So, I'm just kind of looking for answers, why we had a hiring freeze, how are we doing now that that's been, you know, released, and since you had that suggestion from Pam Stewart, that these schools need teachers. Eleven.
Well, that appointment has already been made to meet.
Okay, good.
And we're sending you the daily updates on the turnarounds and the vacancies.
What about the other schools, though? I mean, we have eleven DA schools, but we also have many other schools that need teachers.
Right.
How are we doing?
So, one of the recommendations from our external operator, which we're doing, which we also heard tonight, was that their, their, the recruiting right now is going on for our DA schools. There will be some teachers in those schools who have been identified, and I talked to our external operator this afternoon about this, because they have to be a part of coming up with the recruiting. There are teachers at the newly identified DA schools who are not qualified, highly qualified and, and.
Their VAM score.
Yeah, their VAM score is, and they have to be moved. So, the recruiting right now is going on, on the website for those DA schools, to get the highly effective and effective teachers. Those that did not have a VAM score will be moved to other schools. Once the DA schools are filled, then they will open up recruiting for the other schools. But this is their recommendation, and I believe it's probably gonna be one of the DLE recommendations as well. So, the, right now, the recruiting tool is for those schools, and that's what our website is right now. And that was a recommendation from our external operator.
Thing I'm gonna say is that that's nothing anymore than what we were saying at last year, is that we filled out turnaround schools first, so that's the priority. What I was also hearing is that we need to have an idea of where, how many openings we are looking around the district. You know, I know we got the same problem everybody else got, looking for teachers, but we wanna know what our problem is, though. That's what I'm hearing.
Right. And as a board member, I'm still questioning, because it's even out in the community, why did Marion County have a hiring freeze on teachers when we have a shortage? You know, and I, if we think back to June, you know, we, I brought it up then, so, you know, I'm just kinda trying to figure out what's happened here, you know? When we don't have teachers and our positions filled, but we had a hiring freeze. So, maybe you could gather those answers and present that in another workshop.
Certainly. And then, so for the, the daily turnaround update, we'll add all schools then.
Okay.
But just know that those will be stagnant until the turnarounds are filled.
Doc, I'm not as smart as these guys, so you gotta understand. I want the turnaround schools to be separate, and then we, then I wanna look at the rest of them over here, because I want, I'm really lazing in, focusing in on those turnaround schools. Okay? And then we can.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll differentiate that.
Anything else? Okay. I was, I was gonna talk about, I did see the numbers today on, on the hiring of teachers, and it is, I think, our recruiting team. I did talk with them as well, because that has been a concern of mine. And I do see progress. I think we'll see good and better progress as, as we move towards the beginning of the year. Each day, that number continues to go down. So, and I talked to our recruiting team today as well. They've got some good plans.
And I also, as a board member, I'm very interested in why we would need a recruitment team when we have a hiring freeze. I feel like we're contradicting. So, we have a hiring freeze, but then we hire a recruiting team. You know, I'm just kinda looking at that and how our dollars are spent, but we can say that.
We don't have a hiring freeze now.
But we did. We did, the summer. The summer, we did.
We just hired her. This is her third week.
Right, but still, we were, I had a teacher in another district, and she was kind of, she actually called me, and she said, I was on your website just out of curiosity. She said, why do y'all have a hiring freeze? You know, everybody's looking for this, for school teachers, and you got a hiring freeze. You know, it was kinda contradicting. Now, I did speak to Polk County, I spoke to Polk County Superintendent's Office, and they, last year, in their turnaround schools, they put everyone that had a certificate in the district office that, that could be spared, like the reading coaches. I know we call them something different now, the reading and the math coaches and everything. They went straight to classrooms. If they had a certificate, they went to classroom. And they were needed worse there than as coaches and that sort of thing. And so, she said.
I think that's probably part of the plan.
And so, okay, that's, I just wanted to bounce that off, because I talked about it last year when Polk County did it, and it didn't become part of the plan. So, I'm happy that this year it is becoming part of the plan. Thank you.
Dr. Mayer?
Thank you. First of all, Officer Beauty, thank you. Did I say it right?
No.
Okay, say it for me, please, ma'am.
Buetti.
Buetti, okay. Kevin had texted it phonetically, so that was my fault. Thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for jumping in to help in another capacity. So, we appreciate you. We appreciate all of, all of your OPD colleagues as well, and it's good to see you. All right. Also, tonight with us, young man, would you stand? This is Eric Larson. He is here as part of his Eagle Scout project, and your project has been approved, yes?
Yes.
And what is it going to be?
I'm gonna be building picking tables, placing them on a bed of mulch in front of the Public Education Foundation Building off of Northwest Ford Street and Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Fabulous. Well, we look forward to being there to celebrate the completion of that project, and please stay in touch with us as you work towards that. That's great. Thank you for giving back to our school system. Tell us a little bit, your grade, your school?
I just graduated.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Kevin.
I just graduated from Westport High School this past May.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be going on to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Daytona Beach.
Oh, fabulous.
And actually, in less than a month, I'm gonna go in.
Less than a month. You better get moving on those benches. Okay. Congratulations. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. Make sure, we need any paperwork for you or anything that.
I think.
We've got it? Okay, very good. Nice to meet you.
And this is for your, what, Eagle?
My Eagle Scout project, yes.
Okay, I thank everybody in the neighborhood. Do we have any other Eagle Scouts in here?
They're rare. That is rare.
No, they're not. They're not in this building, but they are, he's in a very unique fraternity, and I just wanted, I just wanted to bring that out. When you get to be an Eagle Scout, they're ever rare but in this room tonight. But they're there, and that's a high honor, and I wanna congratulate you, because I know that's important. Good job. Thanks for completing the course.
And thank you. I wanna say something, too. You know, it just does my heart good when students like you come before us, because, you know, we don't talk about sometimes the great kids and their great accomplishments and their great patriotism and their great things that they do enough. And so, you know, I just admire you, and thank you for coming before us, and, and your teachers and your people at Westport. I know I give teachers, I give my children's teachers a lot of credit for where my students, my children are today, and I know your parents probably do the same. A lot of good teachers are behind you, and a lot of good parents, but the teachers make such a difference. And so, that's what we're up here doing, trying to make sure that we get those teachers in those classrooms so we can make more of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Another little bit of happy, not in person, but this is also about one of our students. I received this email, and it was written by one of our employees, and I'm, I'll expedite this, but I wanna read it to you. It was sent to me just a week or so ago. So, Dr. Mayer, "As a veteran school employee, I have never contacted a superintendent in the thirty-five years of service I have completed, but this time I would like to give an extra special praise to Mr. Carlisle, the new principal at Vanguard High School. I just received an email from Iowa State University where my daughter Megan, who was an IB student, will be attending the." was an IB student, will be attending this fall. Iowa State had withdrawn her scholarship, claiming that she had a GPA that was lower than they expected. This meant a $36,000 loss because of the scholarship, and Megan was going to take off and work for a year because of that. Now, after finding that out, I made an appointment to talk to Mr. Carlisle to see what could be done. And now, in the interim of that, Mr. Carlisle calls Iowa State, gets it all settled, the parent calls Iowa State to talk again, and they said, 'It's all fixed.' Because of what Mr. Carlisle shared with us, we realized that everything was fine." So they reinstated the scholarship. And again, I have to say that, that our young lady, Megan Swan, is getting a $36,000 scholarship from Iowa State University. So Dad finishes and says, "I cannot tell you how much this means to us. Whatever he said, Mr. Carlisle, was apparently the exact correct thing, and we will be forever grateful to him. What a great way to end Megan's career at Vanguard. Thank you for hiring Mr. Carlisle as a principal. Sincerely, Carrie Swan." So praise for Mr. Carlisle, but also another awesome opportunity for one of, one of our graduates. So, that's great. I want to share just a bit of a book, and then some information to tie back into what we were talking about with, with teachers. The awesome reading series that, that we have adopted, in fourth grade, fourth and fifth grade, the students will be reading personal narratives, which is like a short autobiography from a famous person. And Ms. Beck shared this with me, and she knew I would be so excited to see this, but one of the first narratives that is read by our fourth graders is written by Condoleezza Rice. And for those not so familiar, but currently, Condoleezza Rice, Dr. Rice, is a professor of political science at Stanford, and of course, she was the first female national security advisor for the United States, and the first female African-American Secretary of State from 2005 to 2009. And in the reader, Condoleezza Rice shares about the time when her mother was pregnant, about to give birth, and of course, back then, they didn't have the sonograms, and her dad, John, was certain that it was going to be a boy. He was certain it was going to be a boy, but Mom was sure it was going to be a girl, and it tells about how Mom came up with her name, and about Mom loved music, as Dr. Rice does, who is just a famous piano player. So Mom is going through all these musical terms, which Ms. McCall, I bet you're familiar with, but Mom wanted to name her at... Ondantino, but that means slow in music, and Mom's like, "Oh, no, no, no." So she combined a few words, and pronounce these for me, ma'am.
Dolce, con dolce.
Which she formed into Condoleezza, so that's how Condoleezza got her name. So while Mom's doing all that, she says, "My father's prepared for John's birth, and he bought a football and other pieces of sporting equipment." So Dad's getting all ready for John to come. "My mother thought she felt labor pains on Friday night, November 12th," that's my son's birthday, "and was rushed to the doctor. Dr. Plump, the black pediatrician who delivered most of the black babies in town, explained it was probably just anxiety. He decided nonetheless to put mother in the hospital where she could rest comfortably." Now, this is where Ms. Beck brought this to my attention, that this is going to be, what is going to raise the level of, of what we're teaching and what we're expecting out of our students, because in Dr. Rice's own words, she uses this next sentence, "The public hospitals were completely segregated in Birmingham with the Negro wards, no private rooms were available, and the basement..." It then continues to the, the status and, and the conditions of hospitals during segregation times like this. And when this was presented, this text was presented to our professional development groups and our teacher leaders that will carry this out in the classrooms, our teacher leaders embraced this. And what Ms. Beck shared is that the conversation that's going to occur prior to these stories being read in school is going to be really in-depth and intentional, because you just can't roll a story like this out with, with terminology that we don't use now and expect our kids to understand, and understand the context of when, of why it was used and why that term is used when we don't use it now. So I wanted to bring that up to, to the board, to the public, to know that the level, and even you see, as I was reading it, the sentence structure is much more complex and much more intense than anything we have read before. And as we touch on these topics, written by the actual people who lived them, know that we will preface topics like this with great conversation, know that our teacher leaders and our CASs, our coaches, are, are in there with our teachers to help them with those conversations, and that this will be a conversation as well that we will have with families ahead of time, so that they, they know what is happening in our classrooms. I'm, I'm very excited about this. I'm exceptionally appreciative to the committee who put this together, to put their recommendation together to accept this curriculum, and to the board for voting it in. So we're very, just thank you for that, and know that there's, there's more to come, and that our, our teachers will be communicating that with our families.
And Dr. Mayor, may I add something? That our teachers might hear us say, the real story there is that only in America could that little girl go on to be Secretary of State for the United States.
And that's how she wraps that, that narrative up. And that's actually an excerpt from her autobiography, her memoir. So it is, it is actual literature and actual published work that, that we're sharing with these.
Thank you for sharing that. I enjoyed it.
Yeah. So just know that, that that work is, is coming out. So to wrap back around to our, the crisis in hiring teachers, which is statewide, would Mr. and Mrs. Masters, could you just come up? Because we need a face to these statistics. And as Mr. and Mrs. Masters, two of our awesome employees, come up to the podium, I just wanted to share a little bit of data with you. Last year, in the state of Florida, over 900 Florida teachers were terminated because they could not pass the Florida Teacher Certification Exam, one part or more, and many of them had effective or highly effective evaluation. I'm reading out of the Tampa Bay Times, despite a spokesperson from the Florida Department of Education telling us early on that they expected the increase in failure rates of the exam, but that the scores would increase over time, from 2015, the latest scores obtained show there has not been improvement. You mentioned Polk County earlier. More than 90 teachers were terminated due to the FTCE, and last year, it was 79. These are teachers, again, that have been rated effective, effective or highly effective. Not only are they losing their job, but the money that they are pouring into trying to pass an exam that, that does not have great credibility is intense. With their permission, I am sharing that Mrs. Masters, who has been an employee of ours since August of 99, and who started with us as a non-instructional employee, who wanted to be a teacher, in fact, ma'am, you were our non-instructional employee of the year in 2001, and you stayed with us because you were committed to our kids and you wanted to be a teacher, and in fact, finished your degree, started as a teacher, and then could not pass a certain portion of the exam. Mrs. Masters has spent over $1,580 to try to pass the exam, and I have her test history there as well. She has attended many test prep sessions, both at, at another entity and ours internally. And so she continues to try to do that. Mr. Masters, her awesome husband, joined the Marion County family as well, and started out with us as a pair in a tub unit. So your commitment, sir, to our kids is also so appreciated. You became a, a third-grade inclusion teacher, and you know how hard it is to get great teachers, where he was rated effective to highly effective in that, and then had to go back to being a pair because he could not pass the exam. And Mr. Masters said that I may share that he has spent almost $1,900 on, on the exams, because, again, the price of the exam itself, but then when you don't pass even a portion, the price is bumped. The price is bumped for subtests. Now, I had some data pulled today. Mr. Leopard and his team pulled some data for me, and in our district, we have more names. This is last year. Here's a list for the prior year of folks who could not pass the teacher certification exam. Now, in 1617, 64 teachers were terminated because of that. Forty-three of them were rated highly effective or effective. Right there. Right there's 43 teachers. In 1718, 31 teachers were terminated because of simply not being able to pass even just a portion of the teacher certification exam, and of them, 25 were either highly effective or effective.
Is it happening more to our teachers that go on later in life than the students coming right out of college while everything's real fresh? Is that, is this happening more to our, our adults that go back to school?
Well, most teacher preparation programs, so the ones coming out of them, a condition of graduation is passing the certification, but we also have to look at their graduation numbers, which aren't as high as they used to be, because they can't graduate without passing the teacher certification exam.
So I'm talking about, like, the young students coming up, like the 20-year-olds. Are they doing better because everything's refreshed in their mind, that backs up, like, maybe in other words, we've taught to the test so long that they know how to take the test?
Well, what the problem is, and I asked, too, what is the most significant portion that can't be passed, and it's the math portion of the general knowledge. And with that, too, it is, the feedback that we're getting is that it is written as common core, and it is written at a level that can't be passed, and we also know that the legislature sets the bar for passing the certification exam. Now, one may argue, of course, we want certified teachers. Would you want a doctor operating on you who is not certified, who has not passed an exam? And I would say, yes, but I would also want a doctor who has had clinicals and has proven he, he or she can operate and take out my gallbladder. I don't want him taking a multiple-choice test on a computer and then saying, "Oh, you can operate on Heidi and take out her gallbladder." So we are, we are missing out on teachers who can truly teach and reach these kids like Mr. and Mrs. Masters. We have a legislature who has foregone funding the National Board Certification Program, which shows and proves that teachers can teach and reach these kids, to turn around and fund this, this multimillion-dollar fiasco of the teacher certification exam. One may also argue that, well, you could take the GRE instead of the regular teacher certification exam. We know that that is a joke as well, because who, who publishes the GRE?
Pearson.
Pearson! So it is the same thing. So, again, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to go fight this battle. I ask you to join me. I, I tell you from the time when I, I was in secondary ed, and, and we would be part of the group that would write the teacher certification exam before Pearson took over. The process is already outlined. It was done through a think tank at Florida State University. The process is there. It can be done again. It can be done to where, when the state takes it in-house, the test at that time was $20.
Wow.
On my lunchtime, I would go take a teacher certification exam for 20 bucks. Now, it's over $200 apiece at least, and then again, the retakes continue to increase in price.
Obviously, there's a profit and failure.
Yes, there is.
It's all about, it's all about the profit and failure.
Yes, there is.
From our students through our adults.
Yes, there is. Yes, sir.
I just want to know where we're going. What's the plan? I want to thank you for your service, but I want to know what the plan, what's our plan? Do we have a plan? What we're gonna do?
To fix this. Well, we have, and, and under Ms. Shafte and, and teacher recruiting, there is a plan to, with our alternative certification program, to assist them and to help with test, test preparation and the teacher certification exam prep. We're gonna work with that, but also, and I see some, some friends in the audience who have said that they would step in, up and help me as well, we have got to work with our legislature to ask them to, to look, at least look at this and hear us, that we can, again, go in-house to where we are back to writing our own exams. And again, the process is there. It's economically feasible. It worked, and, and we can do it. And so, my friends and I are going to go that route, and, and I just say that you're welcome to join us if you'd like to help us slay that dragon as well.
You know, and I understand all of that. I just want to say, what are we gonna do now?
Right now, we're gonna go back to Hammett Bowen for the year and be pair...
No, no, not you. Us.
Oh, us, okay.
What are we gonna do now? Can we help them in any, this is something we probably need to talk about.
Yeah, it's probably for something else, but I am here, you guys were coming in as I was exiting, and I looked right at you, and I'm like, I knew you, but I didn't, and as soon as I saw her, I know, and I'm here to tell you, I know you were in my classroom, and I watched you interact, and, and I know these are some very fine teachers right here that I'm sure, you know, if you're at Hammett Bowen, I'm confident in that. So we need to come up with...
That's the question I was asking.
Yeah, so we can put some money or something into some type of, like you said, prep test, prepping, prepping them and doing whatever we need to do that we can step it up.
Well, and, and under Ms. Shafte's department, we've started the test prep, and what we do is, our, our great math teachers and the other, the writing teachers and the reading teachers, we give them stipends to host these classes, and they like that, too, because they're able to stay in their class but still give back to other teachers. So they're getting a stipend to host these classes. She's already got the schedule for next year. Some of the district folks, including myself, help with exams, too, and we do that, of course, without stipend, but, so we've got that full, so that's what we're doing on our side, again, with the teacher leaders who are supporting these people going through this process. And then, again, we've got to work with the legislature to change this system.
How long have they had it this way, where it went to the 200? When did that happen?
2015 is when it flipped and went, mm-hmm.
And we don't have a bucket of money to help pay for tests. I wish we did.
Okay, guys, I think we need to go to a work session with that.
Thank you, yeah. Well, yeah, I think we need more, I'd like more information so that we can be advocates for helping make this change.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Are you done?
Yes, I am. Thanks.
Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through June 27th. Ms. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-18-106, JD-18-107, JD-18-109, JD-18-110, JD-18-111, JD-18-112E, and JD-18-113E with educational services through the remainder of the 2017-18 school year and the entire 2018-19 school year. May I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign.
Mine just went out.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-18-83 without educational services through the remainder 2017-18 school year and the entire 2018-19 school year? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye, and opposed, like sign. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favors, please vote aye. Opposed, like sign.
So Brenda walking out for the last night.
Everybody vote, please.
It doesn't seem real that she's really leaving.
Motion passed 5-0. Meeting is adjourned at... Meeting is adjourned at... What time is it? Come on, what time is it? 7:39.